I, although I'm putting the council on notice, we may be pulling you for a special meeting on Friday.
Oh, great.
Yes. Do we have it on the lake? Huh? Do we have it on the lake? Yeah, we could have it on the lake, I suppose. No, we can't. It's too tough to record it. But anyway, that's down the road, but we'll talk about that in a moment under the good order. But called the meeting to order, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the community invocation. Please stand and join me as we pay homage to our national symbol. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we recognize, Lord, that you were on your throne. Lord, you are the authority of all the universe. And Father, you have placed those who administrate this city, the counselor, the mayor, and others. Father, we thank you for how you have elected them to govern this city, and we pray tonight that you'd give them much wisdom and discernment. Father, we pray that your favor will be upon them, they'll be of one mind as they make decisions for this city. May your blessing be upon them, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, are there any good faith amendments to the agenda?
Mayor?
Yes.
I want to recuse myself on the consent agenda.
All right, thank you. And I know why. It has to do with the...
Sawmill subdivision?
Yes. Any declarations of conflicts of interest?
Mayor?
Yes.
Just was looking at it. I almost forgot. Harvest Festival Street Fair. I am on the chamber.
It's a good thing we've got a full book here. That's all I can say.
At least it's all set.
Yeah, it's all set. Now, I saw where all of you got some information from the prosecutor, so I'm familiar with that. I don't know if you've read it. Okay. And I presume you didn't discuss it. Well-trained, I knew that. With regard to announcements for the good of the order, as I indicated, we're going to need a special meeting this week. And because we have to have 48 hours notice, it comes down to Friday. Now, we could do it if people are available, say around 3:00, 4:00 o'clock, we could do that. Otherwise, closer to the time, or even in the morning, it doesn't matter. We just have to have a court. And the reason for that special meeting is that maybe the fire chief will explain. Chief, why don't you come down right now and explain it, rather, you don't have to wait for your report.
Sounds good. Mayor, council, we have an opportunity to purchase a new fire engine. It's, I know, there's two of them that are available, one's on a Freightliner chassis, one's on an International chassis. We would prefer to have the International chassis, it's less money. And so that is the reason for the meeting. We're, yeah. Any questions as far as that?
Mayor?
Yeah.
So the urgency on timeframe is because we don't want to get away?
Right, just like the last time. It's on the, it's open to everybody right now, so it's a timestamp. The minute we say we want it, the mayor signs that I submit it to the, if that's the direction it goes. Then I submit it, and then it's officially ours through Pierce. But it's the first person to get their letter into Pierce, and then it's officially timestamped.
So, Mayor, is that, has to be posted, because it's a purchase, is that why it has to be posted 48 hours in advance?
Well, it's a, it's a meeting, a special meeting.
It'll be in agreement.
And, yeah, 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 I see what you're saying, yeah, yes.
So it isn't going to happen tonight, it has to be somewhere else.
Because there's nothing on action. I don't know, maybe we should just have action item on General Potpourri. You actually have to say what it's an action item.
There's that whole reasonable dressing, describing what it is.
Yeah, just kind of open here and there.
What's reasonable, I don't...
I don't either. So anyway, that's, so let me take a quick poll here. How many can do it in the morning, by hand? Let me see. One, two, three.
I'm not going to vote on any time, and I will get here if I can, already. My job's going to be...
Gary raised his hand.
No, I understand that. How many can do it?
Gary raised his hand.
I can go any time of the day.
Oh, you can?
Yep.
So I'll be here at least...
Whatever time you call, we're going to be here. Could you call in?
I'll try. I will, I'm going to do my very best to either be here or call in regardless.
No, I understand, in your business.
So that's why, yeah, just tell me what to do.
Okay, what about 10:00?
Fine.
Perfect. Does that work for you, Madam Clerk?
I'm here.
All right, planning purpose right now, the special meeting will be at 10:00.
Hey, whatever time you say, I will, if you choose 12:00 at night, I'll be here, I don't...
He'll be here with Pelso.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Does Council have anything for the good of the order? Let's go on to item eight, the consent agenda. President Henderson will recuse herself because of item D, but we have the approval of minutes from 24 June. We have the counts payable, and the, we have the new technique of putting the approval of the final plat on the consent agenda. The one, C is for the Gem Valley Townhomes, and D is for the Sawmill Subdivision number two. So the chair, why entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Mayor?
Yes?
Sorry to make a motion, only accept the consent agenda as presented.
All right, thank you.
With tone to...
Be with you. Mrs. Dunham seconded it? All right, motion and second, duly seconded to accept the consent agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion?
Mayor?
Yes?
I know this is just the first time for this, the plat approvals, but I feel like I'm missing something, I don't know why, because I guess Brian said you did a good job of explaining things.
But you have it in the packet, right?
I have it in the packet, I've read it, it's just, I guess if there's a concern, they'll let us know in the packet if there's anything.
Yes, if there's any hangups, they will be in your staff report.
Okay. All right.
And not on the consent agenda.
Correct.
And not on the consent, okay, all right. All right, any further discussion or debate? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the consent agenda as presented, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Jody is there?
Oh, that's Judy. She's... Well, I missed her.
I missed her.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Motion passes with one abstention unanimously. All right, discussion on update, impact advisory committee meeting.
Mayor, council, so we had our first impact advisory committee meeting. I'm just going to very quickly go through the items that we touched on, on the agenda, and then I provided you with a paper copy of the required annual report that the advisory committee submitted to the council. So we held the, an election of a chair and vice chair, so for your committee, you have Marilyn Knighton as your chair, and David Little as your vice chair. We didn't have any minutes to approve, but we then moved on to kind of an impact fees 101. So we spent some time going over the basics of impact fees, what they are, what the role of the committee is, what the state law requires. And so I feel like that was a pretty good exchange of information, and the committee asked some, some good questions with that. Financial report approved. Our, I wanted to say clerk, but I guess our treasurer, no? Prepared the fin, the financial report for that, and went over that. There wasn't a whole lot of questions on that report, very straightforward, and making sure that we're following state code as far as that's concerned. And then again, so the annual report that you have in front of you, it covers kind of three main things, and the responsibility of the report is to give any kind of feedback to the council as it pertains to the capital improvement plan itself. And then the following, last two sections are for making sure that the implementation of the plan and the imposition of the impact fees is fair and equitable as an oversight. So I apologize, I did not realize this did not make it into your packet until late, so I printed that copy for you, but the report's very straightforward. There was one recommendation that we remove one of the projects that's listed in the capital improvement plan, because it's completed. That was our South Johns project. It was in the original plan five years ago. So that's been completed, so we'll remove that unless the council has any opposition to that. Again, this is just a recommendation report to the council, so it is, take it for what that's worth. One of the big questions and discussion points during the meeting was, in our capital improvements plan, there's several jurisdictions that are listed with their respective fees that they charge. And so there were some questions about that, how, you know, how our fees compared to the other jurisdictions, and we'll be working with the staff working group to reach out to those jurisdictions and get the updated numbers, since that report was put together five years ago. So we'll have that for their next meeting. That is a real down-to-do for the annual report. There wasn't a whole lot of updates from the different department heads, as again, we're just getting started on this, so there's not really any real projects in the hopper, so to speak. And then the committee set their next time and date for their meeting, which is in January, I don't remember the specific date, but January's the next meeting, but we were working with the staff working group just to get some of those things updated that they brought up, and be prepared for the next meeting, because it's our, it will be our actual fifth year, the code requires us to review and make any necessary modifications. So we'll have that discussion with the committee at that next meeting, and bring those potential modifications to the council for approval. That was very fast, but any questions here?
Mayor?
Yes?
So Mike, I'm not sure if you're lying, you can tell us that, but the dollar amount that we've collected so far per department, is that anywhere that's accessible to the council?
Yeah, and I, we could absolutely share that report with the council, that, do you want me to just read to them what they... So this is the report that Lyleen presented to them.
It's sort of stale, maybe?
Yes, yes, so the information is a little stale, it was done in June, so take that for, for what that is. But, so in the fire fund, there's currently, again, as Lyleen gets funds that come in, she ultimately moves them, as required by state code, to that interest-bearing savings account, which you've heard her talk about, LGIP fund. So for the fire fund right now, there's $38,0697 in the LGIP and $9,500 in cash. And in the police fund, there's $18,190 in the LGIP and $4,484 in cash. And then the road fund LGIP is $3784 and $4,081 in cash.
And cash is where it's sitting before it gets transferred?
Right.
And I'm sorry, Mike, on the street, that was $3784?
Yes, $3,784. So remember, that's lower because of some, in lieu of contributions for some of those subdivisions.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
Can we use the fire fund for the purchase of the fire truck?
So again, remember with capital improvement funds, it has to be tied directly to growth. So the fire engine that you're purchasing, and Chief, please chime in if you feel necessary, but is not addressing growth, right? It's replacing an existing engine for existing infrastructure. So again, the projects that are specified in the capital improvement fund for fire are going to be for a substation-type building, and we can use those to purchase an apparatus for that substation to address the growth. Does that make sense?
Oh, no, it makes sense, but I've got other questions on it, that because of the growth, we need the truck, whether we need it at that fire station or at our fire station.
Correct, but again, the engine that you're looking at replacing right here, right now, was an existing engine that was established for existing...
It was existing.
Not to say that you, with, with growth, that you could purchase yet an additional engine, and I think that is the chief's, you know, goal eventually, but you are correct, councilman. Say that this station had an additional bay, the chief could identify a fourth engine that would be needed for growth, and that would be acceptable. Again, his project view is to build a substation and fill that with a new engine for that growth. Chief, anything to add to that?
No, you did a great job.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Hearing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Going on now to business, under 10, the first one is approval of the road closure for the 2025 Harvest Festival Street Fair.
Hello, council.
Hello. Who? Voice.
That's Chief Kunkka.
A voice from above.
Yes. And Tina's here, so Chief, how do you think, want her to kick it off, or are you going to say something?
That'd be great if she kicked it off.
Okay?
Okay, so I'm Tina Heffley, I'm with the Gem County Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here to get approval for the road closures for the 2025 Harvest Festival Street Fair.
Chief, do you have anything to add?
It's not like we haven't danced this dance before.
Thirty-two other times.
I do not have anything to add.
All right.
Mayor?
Yes?
Do we have to get approval from the state because of the thing, or we aren't blocking anything off on the highway?
Oh, no, I have, I have to get permits and stuff, because we're blocking left and right turn lanes from the highway.
Thank you.
All right, Chair, we'll entertain a motion with regard to approval of the road closure.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that we approve the Gem County Chamber of Commerce, help, or, from September 26th to September 28th for the Harvest Fest.
And it actually starts on the 25th. They close them down at 5:00 PM Thursday, and will open them back up midnight on Saturday.
So we'll change that from September 25th to September 28th at the Harvest Festival to follow staff recommendations.
Second.
I'm catching up. So you said the 25th?
Yes.
Okay. All right, the main motion has been made by Counselor Nebiker to approve the closure of streets as indicated for the Harvest Fest, Street Fair, from September 25th at 5:30 and remain closed until the 28th, September 28th at 11:00 PM in the downtown area, which encompasses the map that was supplied. And the second was made by Counselor Brzinkin. Is there any further discussion or debate on the motion? And I understand Counselor Butler has recused himself from this particular matter. Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. No nays, one abstention, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Approval of surplus of equipment?
We just asked for a...
I might be able to help with this, or Mike may be able to do it.
No, I was just saying, he just got paged out to a fire, so that's where he went.
Well, that's...
But he's, he's surplusing, it sounds like, some hose that is garbage-rated.
Might want to explain just what was discussed since...
She thought to...
It says 11:00 PM on the 28th, which is a Sunday, and so I just didn't know if we needed to change our, our vote to indicate the 27th, which is Saturday at 11:00 PM. That's all. So if it's okay, I don't care.
I think Tina said that it was midnight, which would technically be...
Okay, because the chief's letter says 11, that's what I said.
I mean, we're usually off the street by 10, but yeah, give ourselves leeway just in case we have a...
I just wanted to make sure we didn't close it, yeah, I didn't know.
Yeah, I don't have a calendar, so I'm taking everyone's word for it.
So I, I spoke with the chief about the surplus, and I can give some brief information about what's going on. So he has a failed fire hose that he would like to chop up and offer for the public to come and use that hose to put on their chains that go on tires and, around tires and stuff, so that it would help stop fires, or, or chains hooking between trailers, it would help stop fires from happening, with chains dragging on asphalt and stuff like that. So I told him that we still needed to get the council's permission to surplus, it's got zero value, and then approve his method, which is to, just to offer it there. It's probably, I think, going to sit on the out front of the firehouse for anybody who comes along, but my understanding was he was going to chop it up into pieces so that people could just come pick it up. That's the extent of my knowledge.
Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion that we allow the fire chief, Kirk Christiansen, to surplus the equipment specified in the attached spreadsheet, which was failed fire hose. And the second was made by President Henderson. Is there any further discussion or debate on the motion?
Mayor?
Yes?
I believe the city attorney wanted the way he's going to dispose of the property, do you need that, Jake?
Well, it's on the spreadsheet, so that's part of the motion.
So, any further discussion or debate? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Close, nay. No nays, all ayes, no abstentions, motion passes unanimously, six to nine. All right, approval of the city attorney to transition from contract to full-time.
So, council, since our last meeting, I've talked with my managing partner at Gravis Law. They would like me to wrap up my practice over there on Hayes by August 1st, so I will be an orphan at that point. I've talked with Lyleen, and I've talked with Mike about whether there would be some room, and whether there'd be a way for me to get set up as a city employee on August 4th, because I'm still going to be the city attorney, and I need a place to be. And both Lyleen said I could be out at the, the desk there in the clerk's office, and Mike said he could get things set up pretty easy, and my files transferred over, the city files. So I just need your approval to convert my contract city attorney position to a full-time city position. The, the pay rate would be prorated, my current monthly rate is $3,400 a month, and so for the first 10 days before I come on as city clerk, would be $1,096.70. Questions for me?
Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we approve the city attorney's transition from contract to full-time.
Second.
To begin the 4th of August.
Thank you.
All right, main motion has been made by Counselor Butler to approve the city attorney transition from contract to full-time, prorated, as he explained it, to begin on the 4th of November. And the second was made by Counselor Brzinkin. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Hearing no nays, all ayes, motion passes, six to zero. All right, Madam Clerk, you are up, or Madam Treasurer.
Not yet. This is going to take a little bit of getting used to. Don't get upset at us. Call you the wrong thing.
Okay, tentative budget. So looking tonight to have the tentative budget adopted, so we can go ahead and go to publication. And then the final, final go-through will be the last meeting of August after publication. So did get our property tax numbers in, and those have been adjusted throughout. I did get my other categories with the workman's comp and the, and the ICrimp, got those all worked out, so this, this is what we have. Are there any questions? We'll start with revenues, and we'll just go through them, fund by fund. Are there any questions about the revenues for general fund? There weren't many changes, my guesstimate was pretty close, so...
Yeah, pretty good. Good job.
Maybe when I hit my 10-year mark, I'll have it, have it downright. Are we okay with that? All right, let's move on. Roads revenue? Are there any questions on that category at all? It's pretty much what we have been talking about the last couple of weeks in our meetings, so... Okay, on to library revenues. And stop me if I'm going too fast, don't want to just push it on through if you have questions. Good. And then cemetery funds?
Are you including perpetual care, Matt?
Uh, yes. Okay. All right, then we have the water fund. And then down in the impact fees, those are just placeholders for the income that's coming in.
Yes. Lane, did you say that the ARPA funds has to be expended before the end of this year, is that correct?
Correct, December.
So that's why we don't have any for next year?
Correct.
Have we determined yet whether or not we need a special line?
More than likely.
That's a buffer.
And that's an extra $5,000 in our accounting fees, but that's already in the budget under clerk, under auditing. Okay, so as you can see on the last page of the income, it's showing completely balanced at this point. And then down below, where it says property taxes by the departments, so that is how it's dispersed out. So general fund gets, gets $2,109,000 and so forth, with a total of $2,519,354 dispersed without, throughout those departments. And that's what we live on. That's how we operate. Okay, moving on to expenses, if you're ready. We good? Okay, expenses on general fund, council, nothing's... And same with the latecomers fees.
Yes. Lyleen, did you say that the ARPA funds has to be expended before the end of this year, is that correct?
Correct, December.
So that's why we don't have to enter next year?
Correct.
Have we determined yet whether or not we need to specialize?
More than likely.
That's a buffer.
And that's an extra $5,000 in our accounting fees, but that's already in the budget under clerk, under auditing. Okay, so as you can see on the last page of the income, it's showing completely balanced at this point. And then down below where it says property taxes by the departments, so that is how it's dispersed out. So general fund gets $2,109,000 and so forth, with a total of $2,519,354 dispersed throughout And that's what we live on. That's how we operate. Okay, moving on to expenses, if you're ready. We good? Okay, expenses on general fund, counsel. Nothing's changed there, not much anyway. Executive is stable. Clerk, clerk did go up a little bit because we had some additional things added in there this time. City attorney, that did go up a bit. I did include the $5,000 under the prosecution contract that is coming up, in case that's decided that we move forward with that. And then the legal fees. I know that in conversations I've had with current attorney that those fees would need to be brought up, no matter what anyway, no matter what we're doing, so our attorney's fees is gonna cost us more this next year, all told. Planning and zoning expenses. And again, last meeting, we talked about how many new employees were gonna be coming on and all that, so this is all reflected from our workshops that we had. I know that one's a, there's a lot of line items on that one, so we'll give a little time here.
This is the same paperwork you sent us in an email?
Same that I sent out yesterday to you. Fire department.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So Lyleen, I guess, you know, line item 105,170, 105 is easy to understand, but 170, is that the volunteer firemen or is that the full-time?
Yes, that's the volunteer firemen. That's where their wages go.
So line 100, is that the other full-time employee?
Line 100 is the full-time employee. Line 105 is the administrative.
So line 100 has the increase of only 1%?
Correct, because that was overstated in last year's numbers. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Lyleen, but I keep trying to wrap my brain around this park development. I don't quite understand that. I know that's in-kind stuff, is that correct?
Correct.
That looks like a dollar amount.
We'll have Mr. Freemeyer explain again.
Mr. Freemeyer's in charge of park development.
Yes. So, Mayor?
My question is, I see the $50,000 here, because it's a new line item, and I know you say it's in-kind, but is it just?
So it's not so much in-kind as what it is is for our subdivisions that are coming in, we have like an open space requirement. And a lot of these open spaces, you know, that they're putting in these, some of these subdivisions that are going in, it's like a quarter an acre, a half an acre, and those little small parks like that, they are controlled by the HOA, but they don't get used. So what we've done is, and in lieu of, so they, with that chunk of ground, there's a price set on what it would cost them. And instead of having to put that common space in, now they can put a housing lot, and then they give us that money, and that money goes to our parks within a, there's a certain footage that it's gotta be within that subdivision or that development, and we can use that money to upgrade or buy new equipment or do anything for the park in question, so.
So on that revenue side, we're gonna see a $50,000 there somewhere coming in this year.
Yes, and it's more or less that $50,000 is more of a placeholder, which I think will supersede that with a couple of the park, or a couple of the developments we have coming in, which will give us quite a bit of stuff to upgrade some of the park and stuff.
Thank you.
Okay, our systems administration takes care of us pretty well. And that ends our general fund accounts. And as you can see, the total funds in general fund is $4,600,000 of the budget. Now we'll drop down into roads and streets.
So they took away some of our sales tax, but they upped the streets, as they believe?
Yes, that was an interesting thing. It was house bills. There were three house bills that went through, and it took away from one and added to the other.
Just cleaning house?
Yeah.
Just keeping everybody on their toes?
I'm just the bean counter, as they say, so.
You do well at it.
Ready to drop into library? Looks like we're ready to go into perpetual fund and cemetery. And as you can see, none of the departments have changed a lot from year to year, so we're holding steady.
Is there any way we can accelerate payment on those bonds realistically?
It's a loan agreement. Yeah, it's a loan agreement. They just automatically debit our checking account. It's an ACH payment. I think the only thing that we could do is if we could find a better interest rate and refinance once again, like we did a few years ago, because that really dropped off quite a few years off of the end result and made our payment the same. But interest rate.
What Ed Sherman would do is job, lower the rates, we should be in perpetual.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna find any lower rates at this time, anyway. And then down into the sewer funds. Down into the sewer, yeah. And as you can see, the sewer payment, the bond payment is a lot larger than the water Ready for, move forward to the next one, sanitation. And then our technology utility, whichever year that is growing. And as explained before, this, last year's budget for this current year was a little bit overstated, so that's why you're seeing a decrease there overall. And the grand total is $11,477,981. And I did check with the county on any additional property tax revenues that could come through at the very end, because sometimes that happens. That's not likely to happen this year. They're pretty solid on their numbers, too, at this point. Not that it couldn't happen, but.
We're not counting.
We're not counting. You're right. So then I'm just looking for a motion to adopt the tentative budget for our 2025-26 fiscal year.
Council Butler?
I move that we adopt tentative budget for fiscal year 2025-2026.
Tie goes to the right. All right.
All right.
Main motion has been made by Council Butler to adopt the tentative budget for fiscal year 2025-2026, and the second was made by Council. Is there any further discussion or debate on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. No nays, no abstentions. Motion passes unanimously, six to nothing.
And thank you, everyone, for all your hard work. Everyone worked really hard this year.
We just sat here and listened to you describe it.
It's always hard to listen to the numbers, but you did a great job, Madam Treasurer, whatever you wanna call yourself.
Person.
All right, going on to activity reports. We begin with Mr. Sullivan.
Mayor, counsel.
You have my report. Are there any questions? Hearing none, thank you.
Well, and here I am again. I should've just stayed up.
Do you have anything for me on my department? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Chief Christiansen.
He's back.
I'm back. Mayor, counsel, thank you, Jake, for stepping in and taking care of that. Hopefully you explained it well enough. We're gonna take some old fire hose that's failed testing and has no value at all to us, cut it into little pieces so people can put them over their chains, so as they're going down the road, we will lessen fires in our community, so.
Great idea.
Well, every little bit makes a little difference, so.
Even if it's just one?
Even if it's just one, because if you drive up to Lucky Pete, or not Lucky Peak, up to the dam, there's a fire up there, so that's what I was thinking, so. But you see little burn scars along the road, and it's just tough to chase those people down, so trying to make a little difference. As far as my report, do you have any questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
In your report for the last few months, I've seen it in 2028, that you wanna man the fire station.
Not man the fire station. It's off a model of some other departments that have done this. They're using like sleeping quarters, so if you had like somebody that wanted to get into the fire business that didn't live here in the community, let's say they were going to a fire program across the hill, but they could come here, and they were far enough along in their program that they had their certification, we could have a little room for them to stay, you know, it would take management, but it would be moving in that direction to have volunteers that would have a place to stay, so. But it's based off of a model that they're doing in Sun Valley. It's also Moscow. They have the same type of thing up there. So it's a good thing for, I get calls all the time for people that want to get into this program. They're very nice people, they come highly recommended by other chiefs, and I just, they have to live here, you know, to be on our department, but if we had the ability to have a couple, just don't know where the program would go, but that's.
Do we have room in that building?
Oh, yeah, we have all that property in back of us. We could put more bays back there if we wanted to, but I'm not looking at building more bays there. The whole idea of a fire department is to have quick response times, so if we had a substation someplace else, that would be the direction we would go. But at some point, if we wanted to do like crew quarters or something like that for those type of programs, then it'd have to be handled very carefully. That's why I put it out to 2028, because, you know, you'd have to manage that program very well. Yeah, great question.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Are we on a deployment right now?
We are, yeah, thanks for asking. We sent our Type 6 fire engine, the, it's a 1996 engine. We did some repairs after the last one, some very minor repairs, but needed ones, just a few hundred dollars. And then they got picked up to go down to, you're never, you don't know where this place at, Paradox, Colorado. So they started off in Utah on the Deer Creek fire, and then they, there was some breakouts on one side, so they sent our Type 6 and that strike team over there to do it, and they've been doing a very good job. I've been tracking them, and we're gonna be doing some more communications. Mike has been helping me out, so that we, when they're in the middle of absolutely nowhere, Colorado, Utah, then we can actually take care of them and see what they need, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, good stuff.
Alice Kellert.
Good evening, mayor and counsel. You have my report. Any questions for me on that?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Chief Kunkka, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you guys. Council, mayor, you have my report. I just wanted to make sure you're aware that I did add, as I said last month, that we were adding the ordinance report, as you see. Besides just adding the report, we also added a line on our normal report that shows that code enforcement, the number there for just a code enforcement officer, and the number that patrol officers handle ordinance calls. And as you see, that puts us over 100 for June, so there's been a lot of work by both the officers and code enforcement in June.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mayor, counsel, I did some research with the question you asked on the airport fees. We actually started in 2024 with a 3% increase every year, so I'm going to put that in place. And...
And then, any questions on my report? Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you going to get a haircut soon?
Thursday, actually, yes. Every two weeks. Any questions, Mayor? Why does it always derail when it, I mean, just the end of the meeting, is that?
You're the end of it.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. There's no engineer. Chair will entertain a motion with regard to executive session 74206 parent A.